All right, good morning. I will call to order the regularly-scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, February 21st, 2017, and ask if everybody please join the Board as we honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Good morning. First item on the agenda, as always, is public comment number one, opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anybody wishing to do so, come right on up. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to recognition of Story County's 2016 Years of Service Awards. Alyssa, you gonna sit at the table while we do this, so I've got somebody I'm talking to? Right here? Please. So every year, Story County recognizes years of service, and we do it in five-year increments, because that sounded like a good arbitrary number at some point to pick. And so this year, we actually had a great employee recognition breakfast. It's the first time we've done that. I thought it was really, really well-attended, Alyssa. 110, 120 of our employees, or something like that, were able to attend. Anything you want to add on what we've done, how we recognize, and then we'll go through and recognize each individual?
Sure. We, pretty much just that. We kind of changed things up and did the breakfast this year. I thought it went well. We may be coming to the Board to do that more often. We're gonna send a questionnaire out, just to get some feedback. We like to know what went well, what didn't went well, and different things like that. We've always done the Years of Service Awards. I always feel like the employees appreciate that, and I just want to remind everybody that we have great employees here at Story County, and every opportunity you can get to thank them would be great. So, that's about all I have to say.
Super. So, these are employees that reached the certain milestone some point during the 2016 calendar year, and we'll start one employee who's been with us for 35 years, Kimberly Nicholas with the Sheriff's Office, and one employee who's been with us 30 years, actually with Mike Cox and Nancy in Conservation, Jolene Van Wass. 25 years, we have Steve Johnson with Secondary Roads, and Barry Thomas, our Deputy Sheriff, our Chief Deputy Sheriff. 20 years, Terry Loneman in Facilities Management. All 15 years, Micah Anderson with the Sheriff, Charles Carverood from Secondary Roads, Joe Hill from Conservation, Jim Cheek from the Recorder's Office, Colin Chinnery from the Sheriff, Nancy DeGus from the Sheriff, Jerry Lebry from the Sheriff, and Brian Tickle from the Sheriff. Recognizing 10 years of service to Story County, Matt Boyk in the Assessor's Office, actually GIS, Charles Bratlin with Facilities Management, Jennifer DeVries with the Treasurer, Jason Grubbs with the Sheriff, Monica Henson with the Attorney's Office, Heather Hucka from Conservation, Joshua Houston from the Sheriff, Michael Peck, Sheriff, Carissa Tandy, Sheriff, Kevin Winchell from Facilities Management, and then the Newerbees, celebrating five years in 2016, Andrew Boykman from the Sheriff, Mike Cox from Conservation, Jan Chance from Sheriff, Todd Dolphin from Secondary Roads, Cassandra Ames for the Attorney's Office, Jason Fugrey from the Sheriff, Travis Harrison from the Sheriff, Nicholas Hochberger from the Sheriff, Suzanne Lang from the Attorney's Office, William LaPage from Facilities, Keith Morgan in Emergency Management, Rick Sanders on the Board of Supervisors, Natasha Sherman from the Sheriff, Kyle Schultz from the Sheriff, and Renee Tweet, our Treasurer. Those are the ones of our county employees that recognized five-year anniversaries, all the way up to 35 years. I said at the breakfast, and I'll say again here as part of the public meeting, how lucky we are to have the staff we have in Story County. And when I say "we," I'm speaking as a member of the Story County Citizenry. We have public servants that really do a great job making sure that we, as a community, are able to do the things that have to be done. And not only these employees, but the employees that are in the in-between stages on any one of these lists, we're so fortunate to have them and so grateful. Alyssa, anything to add?
The only thing I want to add is I just want to thank the Board for their support and the tools that you give us in order to recognize our employees.
Absolutely. Laura Smarty, anything?
Great day, let's do it again.
It was. It was nice to meet employees that I had not met yet, and I will be getting out to everybody. I'm coming, yes I am. It was a great day, and thank you to you and Noel and Deb for helping serve it and coordinating it, and congratulations to everybody. Five years, 10 years is a long time for some people to work anywhere, and then you go into the 20, 15, and 20 above, and that's amazing.
Laura, where did the excess food go? That was, I think, your story.
Well, I know what I had suggested. Did it go there?
It did go to us first.
Okay. The food at first, yeah.
For some of it, yeah.
Yeah, they left some downstairs, I know, for people who couldn't make it and the cleaner, right?
Yep, and then we did have a, we had quite a few donuts that we didn't, there was a safety meeting out at Secondary Roads, so we sent them out there.
So, nobody should have starved them.
No.
Outstanding.
Okay.
All right, consideration of minutes from February 14th.
I move consideration of minutes from February 14th, meeting.
I second.
We've got a motion of second. Any additions, corrections, or notations? Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Minutes passed. Personnel actions as listed, Board.
I move that we accept it as listed.
Motion of second, Olson.
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed. Claims, Board.
Move consideration and acceptance of the claims.
I second.
Anything to note on claims? Make sure I sign it.
I did, I did happen to see that it was a relatively high amount for this claim period for the Sheriff's Department. It was about $8,000 for medications. So I did call over, and they were great about getting back to me right away responding. It was related to two inmates who both had serious, serious medical problems. And so that was nice to know, because it's a lot of drugs, you know, for the inmate population for one claim period. So that's it.
Outstanding. Thank you for digging in. Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims passed. Consent agenda, Board, as listed.
Go ahead. I see nothing that would give me pause, so I would move approval.
I would second.
We've got a motion of second. Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. That leads us to public hearing items. Second consideration of Ordinance 253.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning. How are you guys?
We are good. Happy day today.
Okay. This is the second consideration of Agri-Tourism Farm Ordinance Number 253. I'll go through it quickly. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me. What? Okay. So, just a little bit of background. We received quite a bit of guidance from the Story County Planning and Zoning Commission on this, really to clarify the definition and provide supplemental guidance in the form of supplemental standards for the conditional use permit process. So, we did change the name from, as it currently is, the Farm Retail Novelty name to the Agri-Tourism Farm name, just to really clarify what we're looking at, kind of try to get back to the agricultural relationship of the purpose of the conditional use permit. We revised the definition to exclude words such as "enhance educational entertainment" to do the same thing, to really get back to that "ag," the original purpose of the We added "experiences" back into the definition, and also adding "such that the agricultural setting, crop production, and our livestock production conducted on the property is indispensable to the activity or product proposed." Just trying to make sure that ties back again. We did include, staff included a sentence about allowing home business permits to apply for conditional use permit unrelated to the agritourism, but then we went back, decided that was not really what we wanted to do, and we wanted to preserve our residential areas. So, if an agritourism farm business meets the definition of a home business, they can go through that process, but if it's going to be a larger impact, they can go through the conditional use permit process. So we went through that. We did clarify the parking guidelines, a little bit of the home business permit, just to provide further detail in what we're looking for there. But otherwise, this was published in the newspaper on February 9th. The Story County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors at their February 1st, 2017, meeting, and the Board of Supervisors voted to approve Ordinance 253 on February 14th. Any questions on that?
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
None.
All right, in that case, let's open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address Ordinance 253. And seeing no one moving to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing and turn to the Board for potential action.
I would move approval of Ordinance 253, amending various chapters of Story County Land Development Regulations relating to agritourism farm as submitted, and set third and final consideration for Tuesday, February 28th.
Would you entertain a friendly amendment, that this be the second consideration, and that, given the fact we've had no one speak in either one of the public hearings, we waive third consideration?
I would amend my motion to reflect that statement.
I second that.
All right, so we've got a motion to adopt second reading of Ordinance 253 and waive third and final reading, making this the final reading. Discussion.
None.
Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Ordinance 253 passes second reading, we waive third and final reading, meaning that Ordinance 253 is now in effect. Next, the second consideration of Ordinance 258. Emily, keep right on going.
All right, so this is a rezoning request from Don Jensen. He's requesting 4.59 acres of a 29-acre parcel located at 57375 Lincoln Highway, right outside of the city of Ames, be rezoned from the A2 Agribus District with conditions to the A2 Agribus District without conditions. Just a little background, this is in the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. As you know, this area is anticipated to be annexed sometime in April. Upon annexation, the property will be zoned agriculture in the city of Ames. In 2006, the applicant requested a rezoning to the A2 Business District, and it was approved by the Board of Supervisors with conditions that include that the existing building shall be limited to seed and research, seed research and sod sales. This is really the condition that the applicant is looking to remove from the property. Once again, we're about a third of a mile east of the city of Ames. This is the subject property here, and then this is the 4.59 acres that they're looking to rezone, just to remove those conditions. So, existing structures, there's a steel utility building, a 60-by-99 building that was built in 2005. There's an existing office building, built in 1999, and currently there are two storage sheds built in the 90s. Here's the layout. Currently, the applicant is using the large storage shed on the western edge of the property as machine storage. The office building, located to the north here, is currently a business office for the landscaping and trucking operation, and then the storage sheds are stored of seed and turf-related equipment. The proposed use for this property would be to accommodate a tenant in the large machine shed unrelated to sale, to seed research and sod sales, really just opening up to all the permitted uses in the A2 District. The applicant is also proposing to complete additions to the existing office building and convert the structure into his personal dwelling. Additionally, the applicant is considering constructing a new accessory structure to be used as a shop and for storage of his equipment, which are currently located in the machine shed.
And all of that would be able to be done under A2 if it didn't have conditions?
Right, correct. So here's a picture of the machine shed, the existing office building, a proposed dwelling, looking east at the accessory structures. We feel that this rezoning request meets the standard of, standards of approval outlined in our zoning ordinances. We sent out notices, notification of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, as well as the Board of Supervisors meetings, and we did not receive any comments. We did receive some comments from the city of Ames, just about what is going to happen upon annexation, and this is just a highlight of what they provided. The proposed A2 agribus use must be in place prior to annexation. If the use is not in place, once the property is annexed, all future uses would be required to meet the city's zoning ordinances. If the dwelling is not complete by the annexation date, the applicant would need to contact and work with the city building inspection office, and then once annexed, any additional proposed structures must meet the zoning requirements of the city of Ames. So, essentially, there would be no change in the base zoning district, we're just removing the seed and seed research and sod sales condition. The rezoning is really only applies to about 15% of the property. The applicant already conducts some of the A2 businesses on the property, and this area will take time to transition to the industrial use that the city of Ames is proposing, and we feel this is a reasonable transition.
So, it is a rezoning, even though we're not rezoning it? All we're doing is removing conditions, but that's still rezoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
Questions before we open the public hearing?
None.
None.
All right, public hearing, opportunity for anyone to speak on Ordinance 258 is now open. Anyone wishing to do so, come right up, and seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll close the public hearing, turn to the Board for action.
I would move approval of the second consideration of Ordinance 258, waiving the third reading, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Story County than the Jensen rezoning request.
I second.
A motion of second. Discussion.
None.
This is clearly the right thing to do, and he's on a timetable here, so, yes.
That couldn't be said any better, very good.
Hundred percent. Further discussion. Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Ordinance 258 passes on second reading, we waive third and final reading, meaning that Ordinance 258 is now in effect, and Mr. Jensen is off the clock for the city of Ames. And, moving on, third and final public hearing items, second consideration of Ordinance 259, and this is the J and S subdivision.
This is a request for a rezoning and a minor subdivision. The applicant is Jeff Dillman of Ames. The property is located at 25996 620th Avenue, about a mile and a quarter south of the city of Nevada. On the nature of the request is really three items. It's a zoning map amendment request from the A1 Agricultural District to the A2 Agribus District. It's also a C2C comprehensive future land use map amendment from the agricultural conservation area to the commercial industrial area, and a minor subdivision request to divide the building site, which is on the 1.7 net acres from the agricultural land. So here's the entire parcel outlined here. The proposed rezoning area is in red here, just the building site. Here's the plat, the proposed Lot 1 will be 1.98 acres, and proposed Lot 2 would be 27.4 acres. Here's the subject property, it's an accessory structure that's currently being used for farm equipment storage, looking north from the property and east. You can see it's surrounded by farm fields. There will be a 50-foot access easement on proposed Lot 1 for the agricultural land on proposed Lot 2. We did receive some comments from the interagency review team, most, I will just pull out one as a reminder for the, when the property sells, on the environmental health department wanted to remind the seller and the buyer, a time of transreceptic inspection will be We also sent notifications out on this to property owners within a quarter-mile, before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and again, before the Board of Supervisors, and we did not receive any comments. In terms of the proposed zoning and future land use map changes, the proposed use is a seed sales business, it's interrelated to agriculture and the surrounding, and is surrounded by agricultural row crops. No crops are going to be taken out of production, it's simply division of the building site and then a rezoning of that site as well. The proposed rezoning conforms to the C2C comprehensive plan, and also the statement of intent for the A2 Agribus District, and the proposed use, we feel, will conform to the surrounding land use and development patterns. Terms of the subdivision, it really just is accomplishing this goal of separating the building site or the proposed seed sale use from the agricultural land. This only creates two lots as required by the minor subdivision. Both lots have frontage, there will be no new accesses requested, and no new land is set apart for streets, alleys, parks, dedicated open space, et cetera. So, the planning and zoning, or the planning and development staff recommend approval of these two items. The Story County Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the cases. On February 7th, the city of Nevada Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case, and this item will be brought to the city of Nevada City Council on Monday, the 27th of this month. Any questions on that one?
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
None.
All right, so we'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 259 and Resolution 1775 and 1776, which are directly related to the implementation of Ordinance 259. Is there anyone wishing to speak to that? Now's your chance. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing and turn to the Board for action.
I move the approval of the second consideration of Ordinance Number 259, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Story County, Iowa, for Resolution Number 17-75. The proposed J and S subdivision and Resolution 17-76, the C2C future land map, land use map amendment as submitted, and I waive, I ask that we waive third consideration.
Check it down.
We've got a motion of the second, it's really clear, I won't even repeat it. Any further comments?
Whoa, whoa.
Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Ordinance 259, Resolution 1775 and Resolution 1776, all pass second reading, third reading is waived, making all of those effective. Anything else, Emily? Thank you very much. Good job today.
Thank you.
That's it for public hearing items. Now we've got additional items. Consideration of criteria for and planned expenditures of the Energy Transfer Partners' $1.6 million by Mike Cox and Nancy Franks. Good morning. Hi there.
Good morning.
So, let's see, I want to see if I can set the table. So, this conversation, well, this conversation's been going since Energy Transfer Partners agreed to pay Story County $1.6 million in terms of mitigation for impacts that they might have for crossing the heart of Iowa Nature Trail. At that time, the previous Board agreed that those dollars should in fact be set aside and held for conservation practice, conservation projects. Conservation came back with a draft proposal that didn't tie that those dollars necessarily to specific projects, but tied it to specific criteria, and then as we went through the budgeting process for FY '18, it became clear that we had some confusion about exact, more specifically, where those dollars would go, and so Conservation went back and went to work and got more specific on where it sees those dollars going over time. Did it set the table well enough?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. And part of that table was the resolution that Conservation Board did and the Board approved, but like you say, that really had no details in it for the expenditure of those funds, more so criteria, and so as a result of that, then the Conservation Board got back together and discussed, kind of refined some of those criteria, and then created a list of planned expenditures of that, of those funds. So, with that, Nancy is really the one that has kind of spearheaded putting this together, so I think Nancy will walk us through it.
Yeah, just as you all said, you gave us a nice little homework assignment at the budget workshop, and, you know, as a professor, that doesn't drive me crazy at all. In fact, it was a nice gift to be able to have lots of conversations with lots of people about what matters in Story County when it comes to conservation and natural resources. So, what we did is, you've seen the document, the purpose comes right out of the resolution, the amount. We chose to want to spend it down as much as we can by FY '20, because we matched up our strategic plan, our SIP, your SIP, C2C, your strategic plan, and tried to find the crosswalking. I have a pile this thick of crosswalk documents. One of the things that came out of top across everything was trails. Everybody's got that everywhere. Water quality came out quite a bit. Land acquisition came out. So those things are reflected in here from all those documents. We actually got much more specific about our criteria. As you can see, we not only had those that were in the resolution, we added quite a few more, and we had required and preferred. And the preferred criteria that tended to really come to the top the most is how can we use these funds to get us a good return on investment? Whether that return on investment is dollar-to-dollar, or it's dollar to people, or it's dollar to social impact. So we also are using, instead of ROI, ROVI, which is return on volunteer investment, and SRUI, which is social return on investment. So we have all of those at play. So we use those criteria. It was really easy to create the criteria, get clear on that, and then came the moment of justice. How would you apply it to day-to-day operations when this is important, and this is important, and this is all-important? And so what you have in front of you are a series of projects that we suggest over the next three years, we think are the most critical for the people of Story County, that take into those things, such as water quality, leverage, et cetera. So we entertain your questions, concerns, comments.
Yeah, so let's just go through the planned expenditures and make sure that we're all clear on what we're looking at. The Jordan Acres acquisition, that's already, if it hasn't been spent, it's already been approved, and it's already in the pipeline
Right.
...to be spent. The rest of this are items that are not existing in the current FY '18 conservation budget, and there's many projects that would either begin or be completed in FY '18 according to this list. And so we just need to be clear that Board agreement with this does not automatically put these items in our budget. We're still going to need to talk about these on a project-by-project basis as they come forward, and then I've got a couple in here that I want to specifically talk about and see if we're moving in the right direction, but I want to open it up to Laura Smarty first.
And that's very appropriate, because with any of these projects, they're moving targets, and they change on a daily basis, so we don't want to guarantee something and then not be able to deliver, you know? So it's a nice, nice
So, the Bear Creek Bridge is the first one sitting there that makes perfect sense to talk about. That was something that, as I understand it, we didn't know it was going to be damaged by the trees. It was, in fact, damaged. And then once it was damaged, I don't know that there was full recognition of just how vital a connector that that bridge is, and we've gotten lots and lots of feedback saying that this needs to go up there. But it's not part of our FY '18 budget, so if in fact, we do it, and we do it with these available dollars, it will be in addition to our FY '18 budget when the time comes that we're ready to proceed on it.
Correct. You're absolutely right. We didn't really know We didn't really know the level of appreciation for that bridge until we didn't have any. We had to close it. And then it became blatantly clear how much that bridge is appreciated and used. And so, yeah, we would, we are intending to move forward and get some quotes on doing some repair and then we would bring that back forward at that date.
Perfect. So, Laura and Marty, general questions or specific questions?
I have a specific question. It's on the 2018 $250,000 mitigation banking. It's actually a question about what the footnote says. Investment with ability to return funds plus interest. And I'm like, hmm, can you explain how that will work?
Yeah, you bet.
I learned a lot on this one, too.
Okay.
So, there's mitigation banking. I'll keep it very clear. There are certain, this is swamp buster mitigation, swamp buster bill mitigation. So, farmers that need to do mitigation for their farming practices, then there's a mitigation bank setup that can take that credit for them or can take that mitigation. Farmer pays a per acre rate, goes to a credit, say one credit acre in a wetland, and then that money that the farmer pays goes to restore that wetland. Okay? So, in essence, the way this would work is this particular mitigation bank is very interested in, which is its own entity, by the way, this bank is interested in working with us on a couple of projects. They have other banks that they have set up and have sold out to other places of the state. So, the way it works is that the county would purchase the property, enter an agreement with the mitigation bank. The mitigation bank would then do all of the restoration on the property and sell the credits on the property and then pay the county back its acquisition costs plus a percentage of interest on that. So, the idea is that the acquisition plus the restoration plus percent interest for both parties is all wrapped into a credit price that that acre is sold to the farmer.
Wow. Thank you for that, yeah.
So, in the end, we get the money back.
Right.
We get the money and the land and the wetland, all but ours.
And the interest.
And the interest.
And the interest, right. And our commitment is that we will maintain it as a wetland over time.
Correct.
We seem to do a great job of, like you do, of putting these programs together to help us acquire, you know, conservation lands, to restore. Is there a point where you're going to come to us and say, I hit maximum capacity with what resources I've got available, you know, in managing all of these areas? Or have we still got capacity?
Sure, that's a good question. And we were at that point when we brought Dakin's Lake online. And so, we did have that conversation. Prior to that, I think we had added, I would say the 10 years prior to that, I think we had added somewhere around 700 acres. And then with Dakin's, we added an additional 60 acres plus a whole new park. And we were at that discussion point, certainly. Yes.
We were past that discussion point.
We were past that discussion.
We had added without adding capabilities to maintain what we had.
Right. So, by no means do I want to elude that at some point when we keep adding properties, which I think is the right thing to do, I don't want to give the impression that we may not have that discussion again at some point, but I don't know when.
Well, we had it in reference to the research park. We added staff, not 100% because of the research park, but we added staff this last year, or at least added positions this last year, at least in part, based on the realities of what expanding conservation's footprint means in terms of manpower and resources and equipment and all the things that go with it.
And I don't think that a lot of the public track that. So, you want to explain about the shift in the park ranger position to park superintendent? What, is that the right, is that the right word?
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we chatted about that. I mean, this board chatted about that way back last spring.
Right.
When we were going through that, that transition. And so, yeah, we've done some shifting around a little bit in order to best accommodate the workload that we have and provide the services that we need to with bringing on to that SCO park. So, we've certainly done that. Looking forward, then you'll see in this list, you'll see, let's see, three different acquisitions, maybe four, in this list. Some of those are already in the works. And so with that, you know, we're not anticipating needing to bring that discussion back to the table right now.
Okay.
But it is, I appreciate the question.
Absolutely.
And certainly don't want to ever give the impression that the capability that we have right now is endless. It certainly isn't.
Right, but we have capacity right now.
And that's.
We just can very easily grow past that capacity. And Laura, I think it's completely appropriate, and I appreciate you bringing it up, that we need to always recognize that there is a cost, more than just direct cost to anything we do, because when we commit to something, we commit to it long-term.
And as board members, we feel like our job is to constantly ask that question, too. Can we still do the quality that we've had with doing more? So, that question gets asked frequently.
So, you're seeing on this list, you're seeing probably over, or approaching, oh, over 300 acres of new property on this list. And so, I can't begin to quote the, at one point not too distant past, I did an analysis of the stat per acres and compared across counties. And we were on the fairly low side, but we're, you know, we're making it work. But I could brush off those figures if you're interested.
No, no, I just, you answered me. We've got capacity now. You're paying attention so that we're always aware of what we've got. I'm excited on the list addresses several different projects. And as Nancy kind of listed, the themes of them. So, the list was exciting to me.
Good. And the other thing, too, is to know that one of the reasons for going through the social enterprise certification for volunteer engagement is that it's not just about capacity of our paid staff, but it's also capacity of our volunteers and our residents and citizens. And so, we're trying to leverage that as well in more partnerships.
100%. And so appreciate that you guys are doing that. We're also doing a great job, I believe, leveraging the dollars here because as I add this up, we've got $1.6 billion in planned expenditures.
Million.
That we talked about here.
Million.
And we leveraged it.
We'll take a billion.
What did I say?
Billion.
$1.6 million, yeah.
I'll take a billion. Go ahead.
That would solve a lot of problems.
It would.
$1.6 billion in planned expenditures, but then you flip over and you look at the notes, we're leveraging that to well over $1 million coming back in and maybe approaching that dollar for dollar buyback, which is exactly what we talked about doing with these projects. So, a couple of specific things I want to talk about. First of all, noting on the Skunk River Water Trail accesses, Mike, that's six or seven different projects running up and down the Skunk River, right? And so it could occur piece by piece.
Yeah, we have several. And I guess the genesis of that 125 is three or four accesses depending on costs. There's a grant right now that's available through the state that's a 50/50 match. And as of today, I feel we're really only able to move forward with one launch improvement right now from that grant. So, it'll be significantly less than that 125 today. But with the idea of doing some more work and then moving forward with some other launch improvements in the very near future.
Good.
Yeah, there are several. You know, we have, we are, we are one of only three sponsors of water trails in the state. So, DNR has a water trails program, fairly new program. They only have three sponsor agreements, so we are one of those. And therefore, we are fairly high on the list for available funding. They have switched the process of just this year, they're embarking in a new process for putting improvements out there on these water trails. In the past, they have just come forward with their own labor and their own money and contracted that work directly to improve launches. They did that at two of our launches last year. We were the benefactor for their work. This year, they started a grant process. So, they're not doing that anymore. They're giving it out in grants instead. And that's our intention with this money is to go get those grants and we stand a very good chance.
Sure. And then the other one that I think is going to be a large conversation with many more participants than just us, and that is watershed coordination. And just off the top of my head, and I don't mean this to be an all-inclusive list, but as we go through the process of doing these full watershed assessments in Story County, we're going to need to pull together the Soil and Water Conservation District, we're going to need to pull together Prairie Rivers, Clearly Conservation, Board of Supervisors, and the other governmental entities that are participating in our existing watershed authorities, just to have the conversation about, okay, so we've got the assessment, now how are we going to manage this going long-term? I'm not sure I completely buy into the concept that's presented here where conservation would have direct skin in the game to providing that, but I think it's a worthy conversation that we need to have all the way through and figure out, figure out what the right way is to do it.
And as Jim P. said at our meeting last week, we've got something here. If we need to, we bring it to the table.
Absolutely. Other questions or discussion?
I would say that you did well in our discussion there in the budgeting process that we had this money there and we were just looking for your input. You obviously used the time, but all I can imagine was a lively discussion to get to these eight points. And I can only imagine what didn't get to them, so I'm sure you got more. Just a question on the dollars there in the Jordan Creek. You know, when you last spoke to us on those, you thought the suspicion was there, you were going to be able to go out and raise them when you need these funds. Is that where we're at today?
That's still the assumption.
Okay.
Jordan, did you say Jordan?
Yeah. I mean, when you said, your first jump off is the Jordan Creek, or Jordan Creek, Jordan Acres.
Yep.
And you, yeah, I got it. And you thought that, yeah, that you were to be able to go out and raise those monies yourselves. And that would just leave it there in that account anyway, so.
To be able to apply elsewhere.
Exactly.
We're still optimistic about that, yes.
Okay, we're not there yet. And it's nice to see, you know, you sitting here and you see the term leverage here quite a bit when you're doing that. And out of the five you got, or out of the eight, you have five projects that you have the ability to leverage for additional dollars. Rick just spoke to it, too. That's pretty good. Also, just on a acknowledgement, I'm glad to see some value of the SCO Center, you wanting to put some monies here to that. And one of the things, I think Laura's probably heard a lot about it and has had discussions about it, paving the trails has always been the desire out of those monies to see done. And I wish you well on making that happen because it will not be cheap. But here's, here's your seed money and I look forward to seeing what you do to raise additional funds and get that done.
You will see a large cloud of cheering coming out of the Conservation Center Thursday night when I co-chair the trails meeting and bring this to them. They will be very happy.
Well, and underline, though, that the Heart of Iowa Trail is a $10 million project on its own and we're probably more like 25 or 30 million when you look at all the needs that we have in Story County over time in terms of trails.
At least.
Pretty easy to go through 1.6 million, wasn't it?
Yes.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the criteria and conceptually the planned expenditures?
I move that we approve the criteria and conceptually approve the expenditures.
I second that. Motion in second. I'm going to underscore one more time because I've only done it four times so far. This does not automatically approve any of these projects. Those we'll talk about as we're ready to do them and see if we warrant them into the budget, our expenditure line item for the county. Further discussion? Olson.
Aye.
Tiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you get an A, teacher?
Let's get it.
You'd be a Girl Scout, could be. Every time she said that, I was like, "Then then."
Yeah, yeah, you're going to be salivating all day now.
Thank you for it, John. All right, next consideration of sending notice of the public hearing for the budget, of the budget for publication.
Morning, Mrs. Martin.
Good morning.
We'll do the hearing at our March 14th.
Budget works, or board meeting?
Board supervisor meeting.
Yes, yes. The publication has to be 10 to 20 days. So, at this point in time, it's ready to go. You all have copies of it. You have copies of the complete budget. As I told Laura and Marty numerous times, it looks totally different than what we were working with throughout the whole process.
And it does.
Please, please ask questions if you're confused about anything or need additional help. But this is the publication that we have to send to the paper. We have a staff meeting this afternoon. Departments will have their final review before we send it out. I don't see anything changing from what I can tell, but if I made a glaring error somewhere, I'm sure someone will point it out to me this afternoon. The documentation, the additional documentation for the budget and some handouts that I've prepared are available in our office and on the website. This budget, overall, the revenues are $42.2 million, the expenses are $41.9 million. The levy rate is one cent per thousand less than it was last year at this time. I did look, the 2000, 2001 budget was $7.84, which was the lowest.
Say that again, Laura.
$7.84.
It has been the lowest since?
2001, 2000, 2001.
Which was prior to the Justice Act.
Yes, yes. The tax askings in this budget are up $857,000. Revenues are up 3.4%. Expenses are up 3.1%. And it is a balanced budget. The revenues do exceed the expenditures by $275,000.
Yep. And tax askings are up by $800,000 this year, but they're actually down over what they were in FY '16 by, what, $300,000? Yep. I mean, I just want to commend Laura, you and Marty for the job you did getting in and digging in. It's a little, putting together the budget is a little like pushing a rope. I mean, you just, you're not always sure what kind of progress you're making until you get to the end and it all starts to come together. You guys did a great job digging in and I think we've got a really, really solid, consistent budget to put forward to the people of Story County. And the real beauty for me is, I believe budgeting like this gives us flexibility to deal with those things that we don't know, that are going to hit us at some point during FY '18 that we just don't know about right now. So, I would, I'm fully in support of this and I just want to commend you guys on the job you've done.
I have a question and a compliment.
Yeah, please.
The question, I suggested kind of confirm in my own mind, under county environment and education expenditures for our budget, I assume you took out the $500,000 for the cabins and put in the $518,000 in all these requests, or?
Your first assumption's correct. I took the $500,000 out. As Rick pointed out to the Conservation Board, this, the $518,000 with the projects here, they didn't go through the whole vetting process of the budget. So, what's going to end up happening with those is, and I think Mike left, but I was going to reiterate that to him, too, is when these projects start to be real, real projects that they really are going to do, we'll need to amend the budget for those. And it'll basically come up, so it'll be an increase in expenditures and a lower in the committed funds, is how it'll work.
Because we've already got the 1/6 in as committed funds.
Right, right, right. It's in the fund balance at the end, yeah.
Well, thank you. And my compliment is, and my thanks, first of all, Lisa, because you so understand this and make this understandable and you have been so patient. So, thank you. And Rick, thanks for walking us through and letting us know where we had to look for items and, you know, where we should be paying attention. Not that we didn't pay attention every single second, right, Marty?
We tried.
We really shouldn't get it. Anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would tack on to that in fact. I appreciate the time that we took to allow the new people going through for the first time down. going through for the first time the opportunities to learn at our speed. Everybody slowed it down to the point where until we were all there, we didn't move. The department heads, the elected officials, made this tremendously easy. I think we are the beneficiary. I've said this a million times, I'll always say this. Laura, I are the beneficiaries of the heavy lifting and the hard work that was done by our predecessors, and I give thanks to them. And I look forward to doing this again because I have the body knowledge to do it in a way that I think would make me more of a participant than a recipient.
Well, I think you guys both did a great job participating. I would say that the budget we have in front of us represents a true team effort beyond the three of us, beyond Lisa, even beyond our department heads and elected officials. I mean, a true team effort to try to put this together. And I think it's a really, really solid budget. And so thank you, Lisa.
So we'll send, I'll send it for publication.
We're going to make that motion right now.
And then at the public hearing, it can be lowered, but it can't be raised. So that's why I want to make sure all the department heads have a chance to just review it one last time, just to make sure we have everything in there correctly.
Well, I would then, if there's no other, I don't want to run the meeting since you're meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
I would move consideration of sending a notice of the public hearing of our budget estimate to publication.
Aye, second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Tiddy.
Aye.
Holson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Good job.
Thank you.
Next, we get to talk about spending some money on roads and bridges. Discussion and consideration of bid tabulation for the Grant Avenue paving project. Darren.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning. Darren, you're last on the agenda, and it's not even 11:00 a.m. yet. How about that?
Outstanding. We don't check the numbers on the bid tab. Everything checked out correctly. Manats was the low bidder on the project, so I would ask that you authorize me to prepare a contract to send to Manats.
I move that Darren prepare a contract to be sent to Manats, the low bidder.
Before I second that, you say, Darren, you've got to be pleased and surprised how the bidding went last week because we came under on both projects. Yes, we're finding that on all of our construction issues. Even our asphalt overlays came in well in the budget, so it's a good year to let projects.
Lisa, did you need a dollar amount in that motion?
Shelley.
Shelley.
I'm so sorry, Shelley.
It's all right.
Why don't you remake the motion? We'll give Marty another chance to second.
Okay. I move that we authorize Darren to create a contract with Manats in the amount of $1,587,077.39 as they represent the low bid of this.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Darren, I think, and you and I talked about this before the meeting, but I want to make sure that Laura and Marty are both involved in this conversation. I'd like to, for our purposes, know what our extra costs are, in fact, for the trail that we're putting in. As everybody's aware, we estimated that originally at about $300,000. Gilbert, through the city and the school system and other donors, have committed to provide half of that, $150,000. And so this bid, I think there's roughly $275,000 in this bid that's directed trail, but we also have some of the right-of-way costs, some of the design costs. I'd like to come up with a hard and fast number, which I think in fact is in excess of 300,000. But I think it'd be worth it for all of us to know that and be ready to share that if we get questions down the road. Darren, any other conversation? Holson.
Aye.
Tiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. We approve the bid from Manats in the amount of $1,587,077.39 and 39 cents, and ask Darren to put together the contract. Moving on to the Culvert on 190th Street.
Okay, same thing. Peterson Contractors is a low bidder, and the numbers checked out. So I would also recommend you authorize a contract, authorize me to make a contract for Peterson Contractors in the amount of $345,706.95, which is also well below our estimate.
Almost 100,000 below our estimate. Questions? Take a motion.
I move that we authorize Darren to create a contract with Peterson Contractors in the amount of $345,706.95.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Holson.
Aye.
Tiddy.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Darren, please create a contract with Peterson Contractors for $345,706.95 for the Culvert replacement on 190th Street. Thank you, sir. No agency reports today. No departmental reports, no other reports. Public forum number two, opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on today's agenda. Anybody wishing to do so, come on up. See, no one moved to the microphone. Liaison assignments. Laura.
Story County Housing Trust Fund Task Force meets on Thursday evening. The Ains City Council added $34,000 of funding for each of the next two years already. So I anticipate one of the things that'll be discussed on Thursday night might be then starting to reach out to the county and other communities. I've been working with LeAnn, trying to, actually, we started trying to book an appointment over with the publisher of the Tribune to discuss getting our story quarterly into the Sun. I didn't make connection with him. I ended up making connection with her advertising manager yesterday afternoon, who I know and who was aware of the initial discussion. And during that 10-minute conversation, when two media people get together and just kind of run right through, what do we need to know? And so they still will honor that quote. I asked about circulation. They're printing 40,000 copies of the Sun. It is going between their subscriptions in the Tribune. They are not putting them in the other weekly newspapers that they own. Instead, it's direct mail. It's going direct mail also everywhere except for the campus-related neighborhoods. I said, well, while they're not our primary target, you know, there are people who read it, staff read it, professors, et cetera. But I did, I have noted recently that ISU Daily has created an arrangement with the Tribune to exchange copy. And so they will, they are going to include that some of our articles will be in the Daily as it comes out quarterly in some announcements. Sorry, Austin, I'm bumping you and your fellow reporters maybe off the page once a quarter in the ISU Daily, but then we're going to get some exposure in the Daily also for the same price. I talked about, we wanted it the actual middle of it. They'd originally talked to you guys, just about four consecutive pages. If we can get the middle of it, we can also, people can pull it out and keep it much easier. And also, it'll be easier for them to print standalone copies. And so that price will include standalone copies. I also addressed with him about the fact that currently we're using Publisher software. They don't use Publisher. Not many people do for going into professional production. And so they also will help LeAnn build the paper, certainly until we get an intern on board, certainly while she's getting used to some new, some new software. So at that point, I said, well, I don't think we need an appointment anymore. I'll let LeAnn know. So tomorrow, I'm hoping LeAnn will make that connection. I sent her the email last night. And then we'll turn over what we want to legal and ask legal to come up with some kind of contract. I did, I feel it's good that we have a contract, that we do have these written down. You never know what will happen next in a year's time, you know, and whatever. And I think it helps us. So that's where we are. We're looking at the first edition publishing on March 29th. LeAnn and I have already sat down and kind of worked out the internal deadlines. Questions on that?
Yeah, so that'll still, it'll still have to all come to the board, the contract. And I don't believe we have anything budgeted for FY '17. And I don't think we put anything in the budget for '18. I had the initial conversation, I want to say it was back in the fall, and so I'm really, really supportive of the concept. I'm just really looking forward to seeing the details. And we'll have to approve something like that as a board.
Right, I understand that. And so he understands that as we're working forward to this, that we may be doing that approval and voting on that as we're actually kind of getting ready to also submit to them. So also, Bob Steinbeck and I are meeting tomorrow to have the first of what will be many, 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 many conversations about looking at the website, refresh, redesign, whatever term you want to use. And then we'll be pulling more people in as we go forward with this. This is our initial brainstorming just about what the process would look like.
Perfect. Questions for Laura? Marty, anything?
Got a regional board meeting on our mental health organization here this Thursday. I've had conversations with Chuck Palmer and the DHS Department down in Des Moines, Julie Jetter, looking for us in all regions to go to a permanent, I don't know if I've got the verbiage correct, I want it's going to be, they were looking for a little bit more consistency on how the regions are run so that they can have the same person improving a body of knowledge to do the day-to-day direction. You know, they look at us as being one of those regions that meets all their criteria. We have been reaching out into the core plus side of things. We just, we are, as Carlo Webb and I had a conversation this morning, said, we are the first region to take on brain injuries as far as something is on a funding basis. You know, that's saying something about where we are and what we do here. And also on the regional side of things, you have a lot of new supervisors who are showing up and starting to learn their craft and trade. That said, had a juvenile justice meeting up in Eldora, much of the same thing. It was an interesting meeting set there in regards to, you have a seasoned group of supervisors that have interesting takes on this organization. It is pretty substantive in the fact that they, on a delivery service, delivery basis, to hear how it's done in other parts of the state, we are lucky to be part of this. And the fact that our rates are just considerably lower and our uses is greater. We were looking to do a legislative outreach because we have a tether on the beds available in the state of Iowa, and we have beds that we could provide in the Eldora facility that are, we're locked out from using. And it's unfortunate that through the legislature, we are in a position where we could do more, but we can't because of a hard cap. And we're at, we're going to seek to move in a way that possibly, maybe if it's not just us, but that availability exists somewhere around the state, we're already there.
During that conversation, did it happen to come up at all that the fact that we are still unable to offer female juvenile offenders program and housing in kind of a controlled environment?
No, we did not dive into the gender specifics. So, but it is a conversation that's ongoing. Fortunately, we are a large and successful organization. Story County finds itself in a position where, you know, we put our shoulder to it. We have likelihood that we have greater chance of success than some because I think some, by just the proximity of where they lie, are tethered to organizations that might be there for the dollars, to hear the stories about what are going down in the Polk County area, that they do things at a costing basis that are far and above on a delivery than we do here in Story County in a group that we are allied with. So we have, it's a good story, but it's, there's work to be done.
Thank you, Marty. So all mine are items that will be agenda items for us later on, so I'll save this, I'll let it be suspenseful. When we get to agenda items on those, we'll get to them. Announcements?
Just, were you planning about mentioning next week about the Master Matrix and the Kegley Branch Watershed Management Workshop?
I think you just did. You want to go ahead and be more detailed than that.
All right. There will be a Master Matrix, a workshop on the Master Matrix, which are the kind of criteria that are used to score applications for animal confinement feeding operations. That's from 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. next Tuesday here in this public meeting room. There will be staff presentations about possibility of areas where the matrix, we might have a little bit of standards staying in. There will be no decisions made at the meeting. This is for information only. And then we are going, leading that meeting to go to Story City, where we are going to be having a meeting about the possible formation of the Kegley Branch Watershed Management Authority. That'll be at 3:00, and that's at Park, it's Parkview. Okay. Please check our website.
That's right, our updated meeting website.
Our updated meeting website, yes.
Yeah, and so I just underscore on the Master Matrix, Laura, it's 100% right. There'll be no decisions made. But that doesn't mean that decisions might not flow from that meeting. Really important that anybody who wants to weigh in on that conversation, find a way to get here or get one of us. Any comments that you might have? I assume you're getting, you're working with LeAnn to get the agenda completed and out. Let's make sure that anybody who wants to weigh in on any of that has an opportunity to weigh in, and we have the full discussion and see where we're headed. Kegley's going to be really, really interesting. So that's an offshoot from the Squaw Creek, and I'll be fascinated to see where that conversation goes and how that becomes a piece of the overall watershed work that we're doing. Marty?
I don't have anything else to add to the Master Matrix. I didn't see you next week. I think you guys spoke to it well. One of the things that came out of the budgeting process, and I think Laura's, has actually been kind of head on this a little bit, and that we have the opportunity on a roads basis to bring some additional body of knowledge above and beyond what we might get setting up here that being interventive. And I'm looking forward to the conversation we're about to have with Darren in the fact that this has been a discussion item throughout the county. It's public safety. It's a tremendous investment we make year after year. And the thing is, we can be interventive and proactive. And I think that accrues primarily from the body of knowledge that we give ourselves to give direction and solicit advice to make decisions that I think affect people's lives and their well-being in this county on a going-forward basis. Because I'd like to think it's done well, it serves long beyond us.
Absolutely. So you just mentioned, we've got a secondary roads workshop coming at 11:30 this morning. Well, that'll be our first conversation with this board on the five-year road plan that's required by DOT. And so absolutely worth sticking around, those of you that can. I'll actually leave at 4:00 a.m. tomorrow for Washington, D.C. I'll be out there for the NACO conference and some meetings on Capitol Hill, primarily regarding the Corps of Engineers ground that we're still arm wrestling.
Good luck, Darren.
And we'll see if we can make any, every time we feel like we're making progress, we seem to slide back. I'll see if we make some more progress. And I'll be back in late Monday night, ready, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed for our meeting Tuesday morning. If there's nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn.
No mood.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.